You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 9th Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation, so if you will all please rise and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you today to give thanks for all of our teachers on this National Teacher Day. We thank you for the way in which they give of themselves each and every day in the classroom, serving and instructing our next generation of leaders, Lord. Father, please fill their hearts with courage by your mighty Spirit. Fill them with your strength so that they may rise to every occasion, not growing weary. Fill them with your wisdom so that they'll be able to make good judgments when guiding and helping those in their classroom. Fill them with your peace, so when stress and anxiety come, and it will come, that it will not overwhelm them. Father, bless all of our schools, that they may be centers for sound learning, new discovery, and the pursuit of wisdom. And grant those who teach and those who learn that they can find the true source of truth. Bless all that gather here this evening. Father, may our words that come from our mouth and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in your sight. Amen. You may be seated. Board, we, in front of you, you have your agenda. I do not believe we have corrections to the agenda or additions, so do I have a motion to approve? All right, thank you, Mr. Single Terry, thank you, Ms. Taylor, all in favor. Wonderful. Before we start with our special recognitions, could we mention that it was Happy National Teacher Day to everyone? And so, we want to recognize teachers in the room, so if you are a retired teacher or a teacher even outside of our district, and that's all of our staff members who are here who started in the classroom, if you would take a moment to just, to please stand. Board members, yes. Thank you, thank you for all that you have done for students. I think we can all picture that one special educator that has touched us in our life. I know that I can, and so thank you, and let us, thank you for letting us celebrate you today. So, first off, I'd like to recognize Peggy Dickey, the principal at Lawrence Middle School.
Okay, it's easier getting in front of a bunch of kids, not a bunch of adults, so bear with me. Good evening, Chairwoman Collette Jones, board members, Dr. Emery, community members. My name is Peggy Dickey, and I'm principal at Lawrence Middle School. Dr. Emery started something in our principal meetings and leadership retreats over the past few years where different staff members, whether teachers or assistants, maintenance workers or principals, told their story about how they got to where they are and why they do what they do, and how their past has shaped them into the person they are today. This past year, thinking about our core values in the district, I spent some time thinking about my story. I always thought that I didn't really have much of a story. I was raised in a two-parent home with siblings and pets, always had food and clothes and roof over my head. I didn't really feel like there was anything special about how I was brought up. I'm not a first-generation college student. Both my parents and my grandparents all went to college. Even though my mother took a little way out, she didn't go to college and graduate until she was in her 40s after she got the kids out of the house. It wasn't really until this past summer when we made our shoe story, and I still have that shoe. And I went to the BBNT Leadership Institute in February that I began to realize how different each of us really are. I spent three days during the summer listening to many leaders in our county talk about how their upbringing helped shape who they were, whether they'd been raised by a single parent, were raised in poverty, or even had a teacher tell them that they were a terrible student. It wasn't until they had made a connection with an adult in their life, and more importantly, a teacher, who helped them see the true potential that they had made the difference and helped form the course of their lives. So, my story. I was born in eastern North Carolina at Camp Lejeune. Yes, I'm a Marine brat. My dad went to college on both an ROTC and a Survivor Scholarship. His dad died in World War II. After my dad finished his time in the Marines, we moved around a little bit, up north, Massachusetts, Connecticut, over to Tennessee, until we finally landed in Winston-Salem. I am a product of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. I went to Jefferson Middle School, Paisley High School, and Reynolds Senior High School. I did go to college at my dad and granddad's alma mater, Go Boilermakers Purdue University, and graduated with a Health Ed major, math minor, and an athletic training concentration. It did take me five years to do so, but that's what does, our family does that. All of us took more than the normal four. I did take my first teaching athletic training job that was offered to me and moved to the great state of New Jersey, to my parents' chagrin. I worked for four years as a health teacher and athletic trainer before my southern blood could not stand those winters in New Jersey. And I moved back to North Carolina in the middle of the last hiring freeze for teachers that North Carolina has ever known. Once that hiring freeze was over, I worked at East Forsyth High School as a science teacher and an athletic trainer. I've worked at Haynes Middle, Jefferson Middle, Homebound Hospital, and Lawrence Middle. I've been a science teacher, a math teacher, an athletic trainer, a coach, a mentor, a curriculum coordinator, director, and assistant principal, and now a principal. Through all of this, I raised two beautiful children who are now products of this system as well. Almost, my daughter will graduate on June 9th this year. Yay, I know, yes. And Roll Tide, she's going to Alabama. I guess my story wouldn't be complete, though, without saying something about my husband who passed away in January of 2016. He probably had a lot to do with my story because he was an alcoholic. And despite all my kids and I went through, happy and sad, we were able to survive and became stronger as a family and individuals because of that. I did think about my story and still didn't think much about the difference that people had made in my life or how I could make a difference in other lives because I've been doing this education thing for about 30 years, and I figured if I wasn't making a difference, somebody would have told me by now. The moment that made the difference for me and why I'm here telling you my story tonight was the impact that going to the BBNT Leadership Institute made for me. There were eight of us from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We were all principals in the district, and we were familiar with each other, at least by name. We all did the homework we were asked to do and gathered for three days in High Point. Little did I know how much I would gain from these people or this program over the course of this institute. The eight of us started the program as virtual strangers. And now, we check in with each other, make sure things are going well. We ask each other how we would handle different situations at each other's schools, and we even bring treats to each other at principals' meetings. In short, we care about each other now, and we mean it. After going through this experience, I realized that before I went to the workshop in February, I felt as though I knew what it meant to have and keep high expectations. I have always believed that I was a natural-born leader. I'd always been told I was a natural-born leader, that somehow I was born with certain characteristics that allowed me to be able to do certain things that others couldn't or were unwilling to do. I had my eyes open for sure at this workshop. One of the things I learned is that we are taught who we are by experiences we go through and how others react, either through actions, words, or body language, to what we are doing. So if I was told somehow that what I was doing wasn't good enough, I could have either tried to do harder or I could have given up. I might have told myself that I had to be perfect or that I had to always do the right thing, or I wouldn't get the respect from the people that mattered to me. And even if we don't realize that this is what is happening to us, we grow up with what are called self-limiting beliefs that form who we are as people. This builds our success script that then allows us to be triggered by certain events. For me, I feel I'm being ignored if people don't read my weekly blog to know what is going on for the week and ask me questions, which causes me to get irritated because they keep asking me questions about things they should have read. You guys all get the feeling, right? Okay. The purpose of the workshop was to help me to be better able to understand how I react to these triggers and be able to control my responses so that I'm better able to lead people in a way to get better responses from them. Many of my staff asked me how I enjoyed the workshop, and my response was, "It was probably the best workshop I have ever attended in my career as an educator", which is saying something since I've been in this career for so long. My biggest takeaway from this workshop, my aha moment, if you will, is that for the past two years, I felt as though I've been dialing in my principalship, not giving it my all. As difficult as that is to admit to my staff, it was even more difficult to admit to myself, especially since I thought I was holding myself to some very high expectations. On the outside, it may seem as if I was here, giving it my all, but if I was truly being honest with myself and each of my staff, I had just been going through the motions. I made a promise to my staff that they would have my 100% effort, commitment, and dedication to make sure that Lawrence Middle School is moving forward, and we, as a team, would make Lawrence a wonderful place to work. I want us to have pride in who we are and who we represent when we come to work. I know there are days when we feel as though we just can't do it, but if we are truly student-centered and here for each other, and we show each other that support, it does make the day go a little easier for everyone. I know when I'm working out at the gym and I don't think I can lift another weight or do another one of those stupid burpees they make us do, there's always someone there encouraging me to do more. That's what I'm asking each of you to do for each other, hold each other accountable. When you see someone struggling or having a rough day, sometimes that one word of encouragement will help them get through the rest of the day, knowing that everything will be okay. It's really hard to explain all of the great insights I learned at the institute that are helping me as I strive to become a better leader at Lawrence and in the district. What I can say is that I am thankful that we, as leaders in this district, have a board and a superintendent that are invested in making sure our leadership is prepared to be trailblazers when it comes to making this a great organization to work with. Thank you, Dr. Emery and school board members, for allowing us, as leaders, to have this opportunity to attend this Leadership Institute. It has reinvigorated my need to make sure I'm the best I can be when I walk on my campus. Thank you for allowing me to tell my story and allowing me to share its impact on my school and my students every day. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for sharing, and I think it's our, one of our core values of high expectations. Thank you for sharing how you're doing that for yourself and how we need to probably do that for ourselves. So, next we will, I'll call him Scott Plaster, for North Carolina State Chess Champions, Atkins High School.
Good evening, my name is Scott Plaster, and I have the pleasure of being the chess coach at the best possible school anywhere to be a chess coach at Atkins High School. For the past few years, we've had the largest high school chess team in the state, and now we have the honor of calling ourselves the best chess team in the state. This past March, our team in the U-1600 Division at the state tournament won the state chess championship. And on top of that, we had the top first, second, and third-best player in the division. First, as an individual state champion, Lorenzo Battageli actually went 7-0. So, in a chess tournament, you play a certain number of rounds, everybody plays the same number of rounds, and to go 7-0 is unheard of, it happens about once every 10 years, so that's really remarkable. State champion runner-up was William Odom, and third-best in that division, Daniel Winkelman. And with 24 points, we really dominated. So, the even better news is this very week we'll be leaving for the Super Nationals, National Chess Tournament in Nashville, Tennessee, and we'll be vying for three separate national titles. So, let me introduce the whole team we have here tonight. We've got Lorenzo Battageli, William Odom, Errol D'Agostino, Ali Merzazada, Kyle Strain, I'm sorry, these are not alphabetical, my bad, Jared Solomon, Lizzie Young, Nathaniel Smallwood, Adam Ernest, DeeDee Pierce, Mark Espinal, and Haley Adams. So, give these chess players a hand.
Thank you, Scott, for coaching, and students were very proud of you and your accomplishments. Good luck as you're moving forward. So, we have certificates for you and for the team, and I know that the board would like to shake your hand and congratulate you as well, so we'll start with Ms. Mottzinger. So, next we will recognize our NCASA winners.
So, good evening, thank you for having me here today, board members. I am here to recognize the best high school in North Carolina. And I can say that because the North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities recognizes Atkins High School as the best small high school in North Carolina because we believe competition is the best way to determine who is the best. It shouldn't be based on polls or based on votes or based on opinions of different people who may think this. It should be based on competition. If you want to say you're the best, compete against others who think they're the best, and let's see who wins. And that's what NCASA believes is how you determine who is the best school in North Carolina. For high schools, we have, we present seven competitions, and we partner with 11 additional competitions to determine the best school in North Carolina. There's a point system, and this year Atkins High School earned a total of 530, excuse me, NCASA Scholastic Cup points, well ahead of second place, 385, the School of Science and Mathematics in Durham. So, I do want to recognize those teams here today. I'll begin with, again, we have a point system based on how well the school did against other small high schools in North Carolina. So, in Quiz Bowl, the team finished in fifth place among all member small high schools, earning 35 points. Are there members of the Quiz Bowl team here today? So, if they're here, good, thank you. Earning fourth-place cup points was their Science Olympiad team and their State Mathematics Contest team. Any of them are here today, they can come forward. They participated in Poetry Out Loud and Show Choir, earning points there. Moving on to the 12 competition, they earned second-place points in the state in that event. Economics Challenge, they earned first-place points, excuse me, in that event, in one of those two events for Economics Challenge. In the Quill, the state writing competition, they earned second-place points in that event. In Dance Ensemble, they earned first-place points in the state. In Art Showcase, they earned first-place points in the state. In Technology Student Association, they earned first-place points in the state. And in Cyber Patriot, they earned first-place points in the state. So, if there are any members from Atkins, from those teams, I would invite you all to come forward, please. And you'll notice the competitions cover a wide range of activities, including language arts, science, mathematics, social studies, fine arts, and there are a number of multidisciplinary competitions. So, a school can't just excel in math and science, or they can't just excel in the arts in order to succeed in winning the Scholastic Cup. They have to have a broad program that excels in all of those areas. We also have a large high school division. Of course, Atkins competes in a small high school division, but Atkins actually earned more points than any of the large high schools in the state as well. So, yes. So, I don't think it would be right for these students to be up here without their coaches and their principal. Mr. Childers, you should come join them, Mr. Plaster, any other coaches from Atkins?
Thank you to all of, congratulations to our students, and thank you again, staff members, for all of your hard work. Also, can we, I think we failed to do this at the first recognitions, but parents, would you mind standing so we can also recognize you for your support of your students? So, we have certificates of recognition for each of you, and we will, I will hand those to Scott so he can give those out, and I know the board members would like to shake your hands as well and say congratulations.
So, each year NCASA recognizes outstanding students and educators in North Carolina through a nomination process, so we accept nominations from anyone in the state, students, teachers, principals, and administrators can nominate people for our superlatives. This year, we received a total of 59 nominations for our various awards. First person we're going to recognize, and we did recognize actually all these people yesterday. We had our annual meeting. Atkins High School was kind enough to host that meeting, but we also want to recognize them today in front of their hometown. So, Joe Childers of Atkins High School, a portion of his nomination reads, "He's building a culture that allows scholastic competitiveness goes beyond budgets and schedules, but Joe has managed creatively to make all of these important factors work, even to the point of recruiting teachers who believe in the same philosophy. Give kids a chance to excel, and they will rise to the occasion. Joe knows how to impart change over time, never forcing anything on students, teachers, or parents. He knows how to let the momentum build and will wait for the right opportunity to let things happen on their own rather than forcing it. As a principal, Joe inspires other people to do great things. It's like being part of a family, the Atkins family. And as amazing as these things are, Joe has done more. He's the first principal in the state known to have recruited academic coaches like most schools recruit athletic coaches. It was no accident that Scott Plaster joined the staff at Atkins, and the scholastic program became even more successful. He's shown leadership at the district level by encouraging other area schools to join NCASA and hosting regional competitions. Even more so, he's shown leadership at the state level by serving as a director of NCASA and later president of the North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities. As president, the association continued to grow and thrive as middle schools were added, and a whole new set of schools could experience the benefits of a scholastic program. Joe believes that every student deserves the opportunity to represent their school in scholastic competition. You shouldn't have to be an athlete and play football or basketball to be competitive and know that I want to represent my school at the state Quiz Bowl competition or the state competition for the Quill. So, he's provided opportunities for every student in their school that there's something they can do to represent Atkins at a regional and a state level. And it doesn't even have to be a core academic like math or science. They have a show choir at their school, they have art showcase. So, there's something for every student at Atkins who wants to represent their school and demonstrate their competitive spirit. So, for these reasons, I'm honored to recognize Joe Childers as the 2017 NCASA Principal of the Year. Scott Plaster is a scholastic director and teacher at Atkins High School and is now in his fourth year at the school. He coaches numerous academic teams at Atkins, including chess, the Quill, Cyber Patriot, Poetry Out Loud, and other poetry competitions. Atkins High School fields teams for at least 25 academic competitions throughout the district, state, and even nationally with a program of several hundred students. A great, excuse me, it can be easily said that Atkins has the most dominant and comprehensive scholastic program for any school of its size in the state and perhaps the nation. When Plaster came to Atkins, the school already had a well-established program, but it has only grown under his leadership. Working with a strong faculty, multiple new academic teams have been added, and many of the school's teams have achieved higher performance over the past few years. Plaster is always available to assist his colleagues in registration, student recruitment, and even driving the bus to competitions, whatever it takes. A great mark of the Atkins program is that it has won the Scholastic Cup by a landslide three years in a row, being the scholastic director at the best school in North Carolina. Being the scholastic director at the best school in North Carolina is truly a mark of achievement. Scott's accomplishments as a scholastic director also don't end at Atkins. He's served as an NCASA director and later vice president of the association, providing leadership whenever it was needed. He served many years as webmaster of NCASA, an essential skill for a new and growing association. Scott even successfully led state-level competitions, something few others would even consider doing. Basically Scott is the person that executes the vision of the principal. The principal, uh, sets the environment, sets the tone, and it's part of Scott's responsibility to, to make sure those teams form, uh, and to encourage those teachers to lead the teams and encourage those students to participate in those teams. Uh, because some students, uh, eagerly jump at it, but others need, uh, encouragement. Uh, but once they get in there and do it, uh, they tend to come back year after year. So for these reasons and many more, I'm honored to recognize Scott Plaster as the 2017 NCASA Scholastic Director of the Year. In addition to, uh, educators, we also recognize outstanding students, uh, for their contributions to scholastic activities. Ali Merzazada is a member of numerous teams at Atkins High School, including the Atkins TSA Group, uh, recognized as the top large school's chapter in the state. He's a member of the state championship Atkins chess team and is the highest rated player on that team. He's a member of the Atkins Academic Team, Quiz Bowl, and 12 Team. The Academic Team won a county title for the third year, third year in a row. The NCASA Quiz Bowl was in the top ten again this year, and the 12 Team finished second in the state. For the second year in a, in a row, Ali qualified for the state finals of the competitive state mathematics contest. He's also, uh, the junior class president as well as the student representative on the school's SIT team. For these reasons and more, we recognize Ali Merzazada as a finalist for NCASA Student of the Year. So while Ali is here, I do want to invite Joe Childers and Scott Plasters up here again. We recognize them for winning the NCASA Scholastic Cup, but I failed to present it. So I do have one more brief announcement, I'm delighted to announce a brand-new competition for North Carolina high schools. This will be a televised activity similar to your academic competition, except it will include high schools across North Carolina, and it will provide more than one hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money to participating schools. There's no fee to participate, so I encourage Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to support NCASA membership for their schools so all high schools in the county have access to this event and not just those at Atkins. So again, thank you for the opportunity to recognize Joe, Scott, Ali, and everyone at Atkins High School for their outstanding scholastic achievements, thank you.
So I brought this bag a long way, it came from LA, um, in order to recognize a very special, um, school that we've heard a lot about tonight, but I want to remind folks that, um, magnet school recognition has to do with the Magnet Schools of America Five Pillars. You have to submit an application, um, they look at demographic data as well as performance data, um, along the five pillars, which are diversity and equity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, which you've heard a lot about tonight, high-quality instructional systems, and community and parent engagement. But what you don't know is what goes on behind the scenes to really address what magnet schools are all about, and that's the diversity issue. So magnet schools' goals are that we look like the district average. So just so you know, at Atkins High School, um, our African-American student population's at thirty-eight percent. The district average is twenty-nine percent. The Hispanic population at Atkins High School is twenty-six percent, the district average is twenty-five percent. The white population at Atkins High School is four percent, the district averag- excuse me, forty-one percent. The district average is, that's next, that's the Asian category, sorry, forty-one percent, and the district average is forty percent. The Asian population at Atkins High School is four percent, the district average is two percent. So I want to make sure that we recognize not only are we doing the job of academic excellence, but that this is a model program in our state and in our nation for diversity and equity and access for students to programming that provides for that STEM careers, um, through Project Lead the Way and their many other courses. And I'm telling you what, when you can beat the North Carolina School of Math and Science by two-hundred points, if I heard correctly, in a state that, um, and a nation now where we hear a lot of talk about school choice, and we've got a magnet school in Winston-Salem Forsyth County School making that happen. Um, so very proud and honored to present this, um, award from the National Magnet Schools Association. And actually, it is a plaque that is, um, for Atkins High School. But before I present this to Mr. Childers, I just want to say one thing real quick. Our teacher turnover average in the district is about fifteen percent, at Atkins it's seven-point-two percent. And I want to tell you I am a, a reason that that happens at Atkins. So my first teaching position was with Joe Childers in Stokes County. And I was hired as a lateral entry middle school teacher to teach the academically gifted in seventh grade. And the day before school started, I left him, I resigned, and I walked away. I didn't think I could do it, I wasn't prepared, I hadn't had no educational training, I had been tutoring my children's elementary school. Um, I had a BA in journalism, I worked at the Winston-Salem Journal for almost fifteen years, but I wasn't ready to be a teacher. Two years later, I started the NC Teach Program and Joe hired me back to teach sixth grade, and it changed my life. And that's the kind of educator he is. And, um, if anybody did not deserve a second chance after leaving him the day before school started, it was me. So it is with great pride and great honor that I present the 2017 Merit School Distinction Award to Atkins Academic and Technology High School.
Oh, you get the bag too, because it came from LA. Again, thank, thank you Joe and, and your entire team at Atkins, we're proud of, of you and, um, your school, your staff, and, and definitely your students. So thank you for all that you do. Next I'll recognize Bruce Sherman.
Chairman Jones, Dr. Emery, members of the board, um, we appreciate the opportunity tonight to recognize some students who are in our career and technical student organizations, who are first-place state winners. Um, a lot of them showed up tonight, which is great. A lot of times these kids, you know, like the Atkins kids, they're doing all kinds of things, so, and some of them are the Atkins kids, as a matter of fact. Did not know they were on the agenda tonight, and they are first on my list for TSA, so it's just a coincidence. But we will begin with our Technology Students Association recognitions, Atkins is the A school, so they're top of the list. And I recognize the advisors, Calvin Strawn, Monica Vassili, and Yuline Wong. And I'm not sure which one of them's going to come up here and call names, but it will not be me.
Okay, the first-place winner of NCTSA from Atkins High School, uh, Ethan Austin, Sean Boy, Ali, uh, Ali Dahart, Asha Dixit, Sarah Jero, Evan Johnson, Ollie Masasade, Brianna Thompson, Suraj Pedia, Neil Williamson. Neil is also the new's vice president of North Carolina TSA this year. Owen Salk.
And I think you all know the principal, Joe Childers. And if there are any parents in the audience of these students, if you would stand up and be recognized too. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll turn right around here, and the board members would like to shake your hand. The next group is from Haynes Magnet School, and Natalie Norman, one of the advisors was not be able, was not able to be with us tonight, but John Boyd is here, and I got a little anonymous tip on the way over tonight that John is the Middle School Advisor of the Year for TSA for the state. Uh, and in keeping with that theme, uh, most of our team is not here tonight. Our seventh grade fluke of scheduling is at Camp Don Lee. Uh, and we do have other students who are, of course, highly involved in other activities and could not be here. I'm going to read all their names, uh, but when I call the names of the students, I'll, I'll, I'll give them a chance to be recognized. Uh, Daniella Andres, Allison Brake, Anastasia Hines, Emma McSally, Gosal Merzazade, Grace Montieth. And just a little note, Grace, uh, entered the maximum six events in TSA and brought home four first-place awards for the state. Jackson Nichols, Mason Nichols, Isabella Orlick, Sarah Rayan, Jaden Rogers, Erylyn Russell, Sasha Segar, Lexi Schram, Mason Sealy, Amelia Tally, William Thompson, Xander Toos, Divya Venkot, Sarvesh Venkito, Aria Binad, and Ben Walker. Uh, an incredible group of kids, uh, couldn't be more pleased. Uh, and all our team brought home fifteen first-place awards, eight second-place awards, six third-place awards. We won second for, uh, fundraising for the American Cancer Society in the state. And for the sixth year in a row, we were named Middle School Chapter of State. Oh, sorry, parents, Haynes, any Haynes parents here? Principal Robin Willard, I didn't see Robin, but I don't know if she stepped in, thank y'all. If that guy can forget to give the cup, I can forget to read the note I had right here that says, "Parents." It's tough when you're up here, really. Okay, um, I'm going to do two groups this time, and I'm going to recognize Charlotte Waddell, the advisor at Walkertown Middle School.
Good evening, everyone, uh, my student is Red Lyons, and he won first place in essays on technology. And so I have to give a shout-out to all the English Language Arts teachers at Walkertown, because without them, we wouldn't do this.
And I might ask Robert Smitherman from West to come on up, uh, because I know his student is not here tonight, but I want him to recognize her.
Good evening, Cindy Lou could not be here tonight, she had a orchestra concert that started about twenty-three minutes ago. Um, she took first place in photographic technologies. And we also had two third-place finishers, we were a small chapter, it just started two years ago. And, uh, we also had a, um, state officer elected for next year, Havan Yemeka will be sergeant-at-arms.
Are there any parents, parents here for Walkertown? I know I saw Piper Hendricks, the principal, back there. So now we're going to change to a different student organization, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, which we refer to as FCCLA, because it's a lot quicker. And I think I'm going to get three schools up here, because that's three small groups, so, uh, begin with Mount Taber High School, Nadra Hunt is the advisor. And while she's walking up here, she also received an honor at the FCCLA State Convention of Master Advisor.
Good evening, I want to introduce my student from Mount Taber, Cara Giland.
And from Northwest Middle School, Khadija Edwards, advisor.
Good evening, uh, focus on children, first place, Arlie Botello Almaguer and Brithany Turan Boza.
Got one more small group I want to get up here, from Reagan High School, wanted to recognize Michelle Derwin, the advisor.
Good evening, I'm going to recognize Savannah Cummings for placing first in the state and placing gold in fashion construction. gold in Fashion Construction.[594.91][594.91][applause] And then next, we had a team, Alondra Ramirez, and Amy Sheldon, placing first in the state and placing gold for Hospitality and Tourism.[612.82][612.82][applause]
And we'd love to recognize any parents who are in the audience for these students.[623.00][623.00][applause] And I know I saw Principal Ed Weiss and Brad Royal, Ed from Mount Taber, Brad from Reagan, and Frida Smith from Northwest Middle School. And now from Southeast Middle School, a rather large team, with Jenny Watson, advisor. Is Jackie here? Yes, good, okay. And Jackie Spagnolia Deemer, advisors.[715.12][715.12][applause]
Good evening. Thanks so much for being here. I first want to recognize our North Carolina State Vice President of Middle Schools. So she is the only middle-school student in FCCLA that represents the state, so Reagan Rams, who is a current seventh grader, by the way.[735.82][735.82][applause] First place in Career Investigation, Taylor Becca.[746.26][746.26][applause] And the rest are pretty easy. We have first place in our Prohibition Procedure Team, and I'll read those names. Chair Amanda Finch, Maylin Leach, Samantha Panucci, Kaylee Pugh, Sorry, Summer Tuttle, Emma Walker, and Carrie Weddle.[770.00][770.00][applause] And just very quickly, we were pleased again this year to receive the National Stop the Violence Award from National FCCLA, which comes with some money, so that's always helpful for the projects that we do, as well as the largest chapter in the state for the fourth year in a row, and some other things too, but I wanted to mention those few things. Thank you so much for being here.[798.00][798.00][applause]
We have parents of these students here. Parents standing to be recognized?[805.62][805.62][applause] And Principal Stephanie Gentry is in the room. There she is. Okay, excellent. And we're gonna change one more time now for our Health Science students. This is the HOSA Organization. I wanna recognize Lonnie Clark from Atkins High School, the advisor.[871.00][871.00][applause]
Good evening. Like to introduce Maury Farfar, first in state for Clinical Nursing.[886.56][886.56][applause] And first in state for Biomedical Debate, Rohan Kapalashwari, your team members, Miguel Ocampo, and Savannah Williams could not be with us tonight.[901.16][901.16][applause]
And we'll also have the Career Centers Group.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you Jaylen Smith. She's the North Carolina HOSA District Five President.[939.12][939.12][applause]
Do we have parents of our Health Science students? If you'll stand and be recognized. Mr. Childers in the room, I didn't see Dr. Nichols. Is he here? Anybody? Okay. And finally, we have a recognition for Skills USA, which is the organization that recognizes our trades areas. Mr. Frank Shodel is the advisor.[1024.26][1024.26][applause]
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, I am so, so proud to be up here today. Today, tonight marks the twentieth time I have brought a student in front of the school board for recognition for Skills USA, and I could not be more proud of Lear Halsey, number one in photography for the state of North Carolina.[1055.66][1055.66][applause] Lear's father, I believe, is here.
Yeah.
There he is. With a camera. With a camera here.[1070.16][1070.16][applause]
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay. As they're making their exit, I just wanted to say thank you to our school administrators, our parents, everyone that makes these student organizations happen. These guys go off to competitions, and most of the people that you saw tonight will be heading off to national competition. All first-place state winners get to go to national, so they'll be going to Orlando, and Nashville, and Louisville, and all different places this summer to compete and represent North Carolina. So we're very proud of them, and thank you all.
Thank you.
So that concludes our special recognitions for the evening. We will move to public comments and agenda items, and we have no one signed up to speak. So we'll move right into discussion items. First, I would like to recognize Karen Roseborough, Inspire 340 Overview.[1164.08][1164.08][applause]
Good evening, Dr. Emery and board members. I'm excited to launch our new brand for our priority and our focus schools to you all tonight. Our fifteen schools are now being called Inspire 340 Schools, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Inspire 340. Our Inspire 340 Schools are part of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School District, and they have a special designation of being priority or focus schools. Many of our priority schools receive additional funding, such as Title I federal funding, where they are able to provide their schools with additional staff, as well as supplies and materials, and additional incentives. How did we come to the, become Inspire 340? We became Inspire 340 out of the hard work of a lot of our stakeholders. When we asked a variety of our stakeholders, how would you describe the work that is being put in place into these fifteen schools, many of the teachers responded that the work is inspiring. And 340, because our local education code is 340, a lot of people like to refer to it as 360, but it is Inspire 340, because it represents our school district. And overall, our mission is that we want people to know that we want our students to achieve and excel despite life challenges through the power of education. So our goal is to put an emphasis on innovation and revitalization in the fifteen schools that we currently are serving, and to make sure that our community knows that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our students in underserved populations are getting the best education possible within these schools. And just to highlight some of the work that is going on, it could not have happened without, as I stated, partnership from the teachers helping us to create our logo. They participated in the logo, as you can see. The "I" in Inspire is the school system logo, because we want the community to know this is Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, it's not a district within a district. It's just we are putting emphasis on the special work that is going on within these schools, and that our entire school district is a part of the extraordinary work that is going on. The work that has gone into this program thus far is from strategies adopted through CMS Project Lift, Denver Public Schools, Guilford County Public Schools, and Public Impact Opportunity Culture. Several of those agencies or school districts helped us to see what types of things we should put in place to help launch our efforts in turning around our priority and our focus schools. So we adopted some strategies. Also, they shared some lessons learned along the way, things that we should stay clear of, and we are just focused on doing a few things well. So our compelling why is we know that we have three strategic goals that we are working towards, and most importantly, we've been examining our recruitment and retention rates in our schools. Our retention rate for our teachers has been an area of focus for many of our priority and focus schools, and so we thought that it was fitting that we start there. How do we create positive climates in our fifteen schools that really show the true testament of wraparound services, not only for students but for families? So first off, we wanted to make sure that people knew that we had an emphasis on retaining the best teachers in the Inspire 340 schools. And so right now, we are focused on principal and teacher recruitment, retention, and leadership development, looking at targeted professional development to address our achievement gaps and instructional poor, which has been our MTSS training that we launched this year. And then also, how do we provide a tier system of support to the students that are in the Inspire 340 schools? So there are three key investment strategies that we are launching through Inspire 340 that will take time, because we are striving to do a few things well. We have lots of initiatives going on within these schools, but we are trying to focus our schools on problem-solving. And how can we tackle one issue at a time, but also highlighting the positive things that are currently happening in these schools? So year one, which has been the 2016-2017 school year, which has been a foundational year for us, we're just trying to build a firm foundation. For 2016, we started our multi-tier systems of support with our consultant, Dr. Elliott, who has helped us to streamline our problems within our schools, and how can we actively seek solutions? So we have some schools that are working on environmental issues within the schools that deal with social and emotional learning, and then we have some schools that are truly focused on standard-based instruction, which will help strengthen the way that our instructional core is currently functioning. So, and also, we also created an incentive plan for our Title I schools this year across the board, but some of our SIG schools that were allotted of the federal grant, they have the opportunity of creating some additional incentives. So we did create that as well this year, and we also was able to secure a grant through the Winston-Salem Foundation to help us with our recruitment and retention efforts. We are hoping to hire a human capital specialist, because we're only as good as our best people, and we just want the people in these schools to really feel like they are a priority and that they are a focus. So anytime we hire or recruit someone, we are really trying to court them, very similar to what headhunters do, to keep them in the loop, to make sure we see them through the hiring process. But once they get into an Inspire 340 school, we really want them to feel like they're a part of something unique and special. This summer, we will train all of our principals and assistant principals, instructional facilitators in the Inspire 340 schools on getting better faster, and it is just a deeper dive into the Leverage Leadership book that we have been reading under the direction of Dr. Emery. So we'll be taking a deeper dive on how do we coach our teachers and provide them with authentic feedback, so that they know exactly what it is that they need to get better at. And then overall, working within our current structure and our imperatives, and trying to align all of the work together. Throughout seventeen through year nineteen, we want to continue to strengthen school-based teams, so that they can do the heavy lifting work at the school, making sure that teachers see their principals, their instructional facilitators, and their assistant principals as sound instructional leaders. But we first believe that we must invest in them first through professional development that is differentiated, and also an awareness of what they need. So there's intentionality to the rollout of the professional development based off of the feedback that we have received through the MTSS trainings that have taken place so far this year. Our turnaround logic model, there is a model for turnaround schools, and so we have adopted the turnaround logic model from the Center of School Turnaround. It states that if conditions are right, and you have school-based practices that are evidence-based by looking at staffing, strategic scheduling, looking at those instructional practices, and then coming up with a common language for how instruction is delivered in a school, what are those expectations, then our leading indicators, it states that our adult behaviors will increase, teacher retention will go up, and teacher attendance is as important as student attendance. So we have really focused on putting an emphasis through our evaluation system as part of the instructional superintendent's framework for how we evaluate our principals, is highlighting both the importance of student attendance and teacher's attendance leads to positive academic achievement outcomes for students. So that is our turnaround model that we are using in Inspire 340. And ironically, when we went off to PEP this past summer, we came up with a problem of practice about having effective, strong leaders in every school, and the turnaround theory of action mirrors the work that is going on across the district, as well as an emphasis on this work in Inspire 340, that if schools and districts hire great leaders and teachers with turnaround competencies, and provide them with adequate autonomy, but autonomy with boundaries, funding and support, if they implement effective school-based practices, then leader and teacher effectiveness and student engagement behavior and learning will increase, and then we will see the gains that we are yearning for as it relates to student achievement, graduation rates, college, and career success will improve. And so we had not even seen this theory of action when we went off to PEP, which lets me know and lets my colleagues know that we are on the right track in making a difference, not only for our priority and focus schools, but our not only for our priority and focus schools, but our district as a whole. So thank you. Have any questions?
Questions, board members, comments? Thank you, Karen, and all of those who worked to put this together.
Thank you.
Great. And so, I guess we'll see the launch of how the logo and that sort of thing, starting probably heavily in next school year?
Yeah, well, we've started this year. We launched it at the Career Fair. We announced our, we had our banner, we announced it to our principals, all of our principals, at our last joint principals meeting, and we also have a brochure that we are passing out, and then we're hoping to work with Instructional Technology Department on launching a webpage for people to go to for information to learn more about Inspire 340.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, let's talk about school year 2018-19 and our school calendar options.
So yes, Chair Jones, Dr. Emery, board members, you heard that accurately. We are talking about the 18-19 school year, not the 17-18 school year. Remember that we adopted a calendar a full year in advance. So our goal is to adopt a school calendar that meets the needs of our stakeholders, and make sure that we address the needs of our students as well as the adults. So we develop a calendar option set with input from lots of different folks that gets shared out. We collect some data around what those calendar options, how well those calendar options appeal to the stakeholders, and then I come before you tonight to make a recommendation to you about the 18-19 calendar. So, make sure we understand what we're dealing with and what the parameters are that we have to understand. So we have current state law, and the current state law says the school cannot start before the Monday closest to August 26th, which in 2018 happens to be August 27th. We also have a final date that it has to happen by, and it has to happen by the Friday closest to June 11th, which is June 7th in 2019. People out there do not understand the complexity of trying to fit 180 school days with all of the federal holidays, the state recommendations, and the local expectations within that kind of a tight kind of timeframe. So we do have to have 185 school days or 1,025 instructional hours. Traditionally, this district has gone with 180 instructional days, which meets the instructional hour requirement. So this year, we looked at two options that adhere to those state law requirements, and they have lots of things in common, because when you get into those tight parameters, there's not much wiggle room to play with. So they both have the August 26th start date, or yeah, the August 26th start date and the June 7th ending date. They offer teacher workdays at the end of each quarter, which teachers have come to expect and anticipate in order to get their grades done, and the kind of wrap-up one quarter before heading into another one. We also looked at professional development days at the end of the first and third quarters to allow our teachers to have training from central office personnel, and combined those days at the end, which allow for four-day weekends for students at the end of each quarter. So little mini vacations at the end of each quarter. There is that three-day Thanksgiving break, and then we have reduced the number of early release days to four. So we're looking at doing one per quarter to get those whole-school initiatives addressed at the school level one time a quarter. So we started with six initially when we started the early-release day initiative. During 17-18, we have reduced that to five. For 18-19, we're looking to reduce that again to four, in the hopes that when we have four days, we can really maximize our use of that time, and make sure that we're getting the needs of the teachers met with those school-level concentrated hours of time. So I provided for you the two calendars, so you can kind of see what they look like, and really what the options are, the option differences, excuse me, are really that the option B provides a reserved-for-schools day on January 2nd. This is new. So teachers from Teacher Advisory Council suggested that the day that we come back from winter break be a school day, in order to allow teachers to kind of close out what they did in December, and get ready for the test prep and testing season that kind of comes immediately, so that the teachers can have that one day in their classroom to kind of get things settled and situated for the end of the first semester. And then option B also connects spring break to Good Friday. So Easter is part of that, as opposed to it being a separate week. Those are the two real distinctions between A and B, is that A does not offer that January 2nd day, and B does. A has a spring break that is separate from Easter, and B's is connected. Those are the real distinctions, okay? So we had exactly 7,500 responses to the survey that went out a couple weeks ago, which I think is pretty miraculous, that it was exactly 7,500, and that's without fudging. We had about 60% of those respondents were parents, about 37% were employees, and then smaller percentages representing students and community members. So the overwhelming option that they chose was that option B, with that January day and spring break connected to Easter. Now, this is where things get interesting. Yeah, go ahead. Are there questions about that? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I've got...
That's okay, go ahead.
I have open eyes. April, when's spring break?
When is the spring break?
Sure. So...
I'm sorry, I...
That's okay. So for option A, the spring break runs from April 8th through April 12th, the week prior to Easter.
So it's just a week?
It's just a week in advance.
Difference.
Yes.
And then the go-back date would be, so it would be a student day on January 2nd?
That is correct. We would be operating as usual on January 2nd in option A.
Got it. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. No, 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 that's fine.
I can't see. Even with glasses on.
So there are two pending pieces of legislation in the General Assembly that could possibly impact our calendar decision that we have. The first one, House Bill 389, allows for a pilot to allow some certain school districts to open as early as August 10th. House Bill 375 allows all districts to open as early as August 15th. The state's message has been to allow school districts to align their calendar with that of their local community colleges. It also, both of the house bills, eliminate the school day requirement, like the number of days, and relies completely on instructional hours. We good with that? All right. So based on that, we built options C and D, because why not at least look at the possibility of what those house bills might actually allow us to do with some greater flexibility around the start date of school? So options C and D allow for teacher workdays at the end of each quarter, they allow for the three-day Thanksgiving break, they still have the four early-release days, and they both include that January 2nd day that the teachers come back from winter break as a workday. So that's what they have in common. Okay? Option C starts with students a couple of days early, so they come back August 23rd, which is a Thursday, so you can kind of get those first two days of instruction out of the way, where you do the rules in the handbook, and teach kids their schedules and all of those kind of things, before coming back and starting on a Monday and kind of being able to rock and roll. They also allow for professional development days for teachers at the end of each quarter and on February 18th. So this one is very professional-development-heavy. For years, our teachers have had concerns that they do not have adequate opportunities for central office to offer professional development, and so this option was designed specifically with those needs of our teachers in mind. That gives the students either a four-day or a five-day weekend at the end of each quarter, and then also has a spring break that includes that Good Friday and Easter holiday. So that's option C. Option D, here we go. Everybody take a deep breath with me. Starts as early as August 13th. However, what it allows, and ends May 22nd. What that allows us to do is to finish up first semester prior to winter break, and to finish second semester prior to Memorial Day. Remember, this is still pending legislation. This is what I've been having to go around saying. So those are the two additional options. So when I surveyed, I took, the survey had a question on it, do you prefer option A or B alone? So just considering the two options that are current to legislation. And then if you had the choice of all four options, what option would you choose? So I didn't do a separate C/D thing, because A and B would still fit under the revised law. Okay? So, survey results, same 7,500 folks, said 51% agree with you, those of you who cheered at option D, to do the first semester prior to winter break finish and the Memorial Day finish for the year. And then about 30% came in for that option B, which won under the A and B choice only. All right, now, so, having all of that information, the recommendation is to go, based on the current legislation, that we go with option B for right now, because we have to have an adoption of a school calendar based on our policy. My recommendation is that if the law changes, and the General Assembly passes a bill that would make option D a viable option, and they do so before August 28th of 2017, which is the first day for students of the upcoming school year, that the board might reconsider adopting option D. So we have to kind of stick with what's current law, but maybe leaving a window of opportunity should the actual legislative options change. So what questions do you have?
I have one. Alex, I'd just like to know, before you accepted this job, did you know that it included the calendar?
Yes, Ms. Parker, I actually did.
Bless your heart.
Board members, do you have questions? I think that's the best calendar explanation we've ever had, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, next on discussion items, Vice Chairman Barr with the Finance Committee report.
In our finance meeting, we discussed budget amendment number six and transfer number six, and then also some good news. The county has finalized this formula, which will give us around a $700,000 increase for our budget. And then also, we have not, I guess maybe sometime today, we'll find out the details of the state budget, so...
Senate budget.
Senate budget, yeah.
All right. Questions for Mr. Barr, comments, board? Ms. Lyta Calvert-Haze for our Building and Grounds Committee report?
Today was a short meeting. We started out talking about pre-K. We want to make sure that our kindergarten kids that come in receive the adequate information, and we also want to stress that we'd like to look at three other locations for a possible location to discuss the needs of the kindergarten kids when they come in, which would be great to have more places for them to go. So we were excited about talking about that. We also talked about Conoc School. As you know, we were over-budgeted on that, and we talked about different ways that maybe we could cut the budget and do some value engineering on that. So it was pretty short today, but very, very important. I'm sorry to say, we don't have any surplus vehicles or trailers for this round, but hopefully it'll be coming up next.
Thank you. That concludes our discussion items for the evening, which moves us into our action items. We have two. First is the approval of the 2018-19 school calendar. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Well, which option?
So, for option B, unless the law changes, at which point, we will re-discuss option D.
Awesome. So I have a motion by Ms. Motzinger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of Dana Wright's consulting contract. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Clark, do I have a second? Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Wonderful. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda items. We have two, the approval of the general personnel report, and approval of meeting minutes for the April 25th, 2017 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Over.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary, Mr. Johnson, all in favor. Great. Motion carries. Before we, do we have anyone signed up to speak? So I think this, at this time for many years, we would usually have a very dedicated member of the community who would stay with us and, you know, keep us on our toes, and that was Mr. Gene Tripp. We found out this week that Mr. Tripp has passed away, and so we just want to give our condolences to his family at this time, that he will be missed. Also, we want to send a great farewell to Erica. She, this is our last meeting with Erica being here. We thank you, Erica, for giving us a voice in the community as a member of the Winston-Salem Journal, and we wish you well on your journey. So, seeing no other business before us here, I would like to entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
Closed.
All right. Mr. Barr, Mr. Singletary, and all in favor? Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. Be safe.
We seem to have a paper for a school project that needs to be...
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2.